All is made in order, please, ethical, religious.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the victims and their families involved in the El Paso, Texas and Dayton, Ohio shootings and for the recent passing of former Sunbury Police Officer David Dove who retired from the city in 1989. Alright, thank you, please have a seat. If you have a cell phone on you, please turn it on, vibrate, silent or shut it off. Roll call.
Carl Lovic.
Here.
Kramer.
Here.
Reis.
Here.
Ister.
Is there any audience comment at this time on agenda items only? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 8, 2019 and the reports of the Police Department, Treasurer, Engineer, Code Office, Police Pension Board and the Planning Commission.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Reis.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovic.
Yes.
Mr. Bob Zimmerman.
Mr. Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here. We are working through SRI on behalf of the Albright Center and of course, as you know, the city's holding a $200,000 grant that was applied by the Senator Gordon's office to us through the city. And we are proposing about six months ago, we solicited architectural design bid. They came in with a hire and we wanted, so the new committee put it together. A classic John Shipman is here representing us today. Anyways, so we got new bids in, we tweaked the design phase. The new bid is for architectural design and this is $102,895. We would like to set aside that money and have city council's approval to sign off on that. And I don't know who in the city might want to do it, whether the mayor or the city administrator sign off on that course. And then to set aside $5,000 of that funding for a final audit, which should be coming due next June or July.
You need a motion?
Yes, make that a motion.
Second.
Reifner.
Yes.
Reis.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovic.
Yes.
Kramer. Yes.
Bob, I think we need a copy of all your documents, your all your disposal and so forth for your files. Sorry, I didn't mean to point that out.
Okay, and you want us to work through the city administrator's authority to do that?
Okay. Person there beside the paperwork.
Alright, no further questions, we certainly appreciate it. And I know there was some discussion about parking and stuff on the property of Chestnut Street. There, your warehouse building behind you and hopefully we can work cooperatively to make that happen in the near future. So, thank you.
Have a nice evening, folks. Ms. Lynn Stare.
Hi, I'm here tonight because when I was at the last meeting, I gave you the wrong amount for the 2017 budget provision, those CDG money, and that didn't work. So, I'm here tonight to ask that you would consider to take $28,100 from clearance demolition in 2017 and put it into the Chestnut Street area milling and paving project. The last motion I asked you to pass was for $24,000. I forgot that there was an environmental review fee, so we need to revise that as well. So, that's $28,100 to revise from demo clearance into Chestnut Street area milling and paving.
It's revised from 24?
It's revised from 2017. Oh, it's re-- I'm sorry, it's revised from $24,000, yes, I thought you meant year. I guess I should take it out.
Yeah, make a motion.
I'll start with that.
Reis.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes, and when doing that, it helps pay in Chestnut Street and keep some more liquid fuel money in your budget, Chris. Which makes you happy.
Any questions for me?
No. Thank you.
Thanks much.
Have a nice evening, good evening.
I will, thanks you too.
Turn your mic over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here as council. I'm here wearing my hat on behalf of the Sunbury Redevelopment Authority and I'm here with good news this evening. We've got two properties that were previously placed on the public nuisance list and the property owners have done a great job bringing things back up to slot and therefore these are two properties that should be removed from the public nuisance list. So, we do all that with the three proposed resolutions. I believe copies of those were circulated, okay. So, the first resolution would be to remove 45 South 10th Street from the public nuisance list. The second one removes 722 rear Catalissa Avenue from the public nuisance list. And the third resolution simply updates the current list. So, presently, it was 41 properties and now goes down to 39 properties with removal of these two. Any questions? And I'd also like to report the good news that word from the Code Office is approximately two-thirds of the owners on the public nuisance list are actively working on their properties. So, let's hope that the momentum continues and they get things taken care of and so they can be removed from the list. That'll do it.
Yeah, my motion applies, all three.
Second.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reis.
Yes.
Reifner.
Michael, also thank the Redevelopment Authority for the job you're doing.
I'll pass that along.
Pass that on to the whole party. It's been a great business. It's been worked out really well.
And what other happy news item on that sort of topic? The county just had its judicial sale back in July. There was one Sunbury property on that list. Ten years ago, when this ball really started getting rolling, there would be a page or page and a half of properties. So, you know, the partnership between the Redevelopment Authority and the city is working really well in addressing a lot of these.
Collectiveness.
Yep, lighted vacant abandoned properties, so cheers all around.
You know what you're doing and you just go right to it and you know.
So, be sure to share it.
City Administrator, the prosecutor.
Right, so previously the council had considered the transfer ownership from Mr. Francis Pahowick of the property at the rear of 246 Church Street. After working through that, there seemed to be a need for clarification with Mr. Pahowick. So, I met with him and asked him to put in writing his exact intention for what he was willing to transfer to the city so there wouldn't be no confusion. He did that and so you have that copy of that before you that he would like to transfer ownership of 245, 247 Penn Street and also the rear of 246 Church Street. So, that's the two properties. 245, 247 Penn was the one that we had demolition to last February. And then I know there was a question also about 241, 243 Penn Street. He had included that in his intention for him and his brother to transfer that property to the city. That property was sold at auction a couple of weeks ago. Redevelopment Authority was actually able to purchase that parcel.
Are you sure about that?
Impossible about that.
Brianna told me that today.
I got a note on that from the county saying that's one of them. That's a sale on 215th. And that might, that's usually the way it happens, the first sale nobody buys because it was possible for all. All the way to get it.
Alright, I must have misunderstood. For example.
Goes up to the second one. $100,000 and now they're gonna take anything up for it.
Yeah, alright, I must have misunderstood, I apologize. Anyway, so what's before us then is the transfer of 245, 247 Penn and the rear of Church Street. I contacted attorney Reese, Solicitor Reese, Assistant Paralegal about a title search on 245, 247 Penn. She said they had not done that one, but they will do one over the next couple of days.
This is a question I have. What's the plans? We have, we went, we've seen a couple lots recently where we've gone and we know we aren't sure if we owe them, we aren't sure what to do with them, then weeds start growing and we have to go and clear all the weeds down. What is the plan, I guess, long-term for these lots? So, we'd like to say, let's say we take this lot. So, I look at it as DPW now, it's another thing that we gotta go maintain. We gotta weed it, we gotta do everything and it's off the tax roll. So, maybe this is my question to anyone to know, what's our benefit of taking, keep taking these properties? Well, how do we benefit long-term? Do we need to turn around and try and sell it right away? Or what do we do?
Once we acquire all, because there's almost a block there, not block per se, a rectangle property there, it's better taking, getting all the properties and installing as a whole, number one. In between there, yes, we do have the maintenance and there's exposure, but by the same token, some of those properties, hate to say it, than what you're bringing up, when we're done, we'll get our money back. If we don't get our money back, by the time we can do it cheaper than the private sector because we don't have to pay the debts and so forth, now this would be a different situation than you just mentioned, but by the same token, if we don't do it, who's going to do it?
You're saying it's easier for us to take them, rehab them, try and sell them and try and sell the property at first before?
Well, in this situation, they're all demoed because of the condition of the property. You'll see in other communities, properties sit there on the main street for years because once the demo's done, the property isn't worth the value of the demo, so nobody's gonna touch it. That's when the municipal has to step in somewhere for the safety side of the coin and doing it. We have one on Market Street right now, which we all know there has said something.
That must be how it ends, turn that property over to the city like you just did. That probably would've been sitting there without anything being done toward the next October, is what I was told down at the county department office. So, that would've been sitting there, not quite any taxes or any kind of.
Well, the two that were tore down.
Okay.
Okay, were falling down, okay. Location, it's an awful location, okay. So, there's only a small option to what you can do there. You won't put a new home in it, that's obvious, okay? So, the demo, I don't know the numbers off, but it was maybe $18,000 for the one and about $20 for the other. I'm guessing the numbers.
Yeah.
Well, we know that value isn't there, but.
I agree. Sorry, I interrupted.
Well, it just, it had to be done.
My question then, what's our plan long-term? Is there, like, do we then try and find property owners adjacent to these properties and try and see if they're interested in them or just to get them back on the tax rolls so that's in on the cities? Because there's a couple, there's quite a few from the city that you don't need.
Once we get all the deeds cleared up and so forth and that garage taken down, that gives a square there to work with and put up for auction. America can be the auctioneer and you get the gallows.
Sold. That's not really the plan. That's, the plan is to get them in, get them right and then get them out. That's, I guess, that's, that's do as any of you say.
And at this point, Chris, it's slowing down, but when this started in 214, we were doing six, eight of them, a quarter or something like that. But they were.
And now we've accumulated some that we still have ownership of and now it's time to figure out.
Well, we discussed even the one.
Random ones, a strip of dirt.
Joey, one second. Spruce. That was gonna be sold and that was taken back off the auction block, was gonna make a small part there. And of course, that didn't happen, so that's the one thing back up with the auction block. You know.
I just, I was curious more about like the process, long-term plan for these kinds of things.
At one time also too, and I don't know because we have to address that again, with that block there, there was talk of making that like a neighborhood playground because of the daycares in the area and stuff. Someone had to process on that.
I'll be over listening. When I go to your office today, while October's in. Your own office, Robin. I'm sorry, blank there. Robin, and we're gonna pick that up again and finish. There's only a couple to be finished with, the deeds are still missing and we'll have all our list and then start separating the ones that go to the auction.
Great, thank you.
So, what do we want to do with this? We want to.
Oh, we'll make, we'll make the motion.
No, we didn't. Do we want to wait for the title searches to come back or do we want to do it now?
Well, let's just make the motion and then after.
Pending.
Pending, defined.
I'll second that.
I don't foresee anything crazy in that type of small block building, one church rear.
That one's done and that, so that title search is already done.
Okay, it should be nothing there. You just give them, and I know the prior owner, I know he pays his taxes, so.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Reis.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovic.
Yes.
Winter traffic agreement?
Right, this is a resolution to put into effect and sign a contract with the Department of Transportation. This has to do with winter traffic agreement and this has to do with snowing, clearing snow and treating Catalissa Avenue from Market Street out. And for that, we get paid, the city receives for this, it's a five-year contract, the first year is $1,050 and then it goes up from there, $1,083, the next year, $1,115, $1,149, and then $2,367 on the fifth year.
Make a motion for a second, please.
Second. Reifner.
Yes.
Reis.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Okay, on this change order for GNR Charles, it was for the two parking lots off of Chestnut. Good news is quantities were less than projected, so the bid has decreased by $28,538.59 and is ended up at $330,000.031.33, so that's the good news. Just wanna update that. I want to make a motion to accept that, I'm sorry.
Pass it.
Reis.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kramer.
I'd like to make a motion that we pay the outstanding bills for the general fund of $159,303.53. I'd also like to mention, well, let's, I would make a motion to pay those bills.
Second.
Look, the fuel is on there.
There's separate documents she gives them. Oh, they are always up there. Yes, I'm sorry, $157,503. Make a motion that we pay those bills.
Second that.
Carl Lovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Reis.
Yes.
Ister.
And what I started to say a little while ago is it's now time that we start tightening our belts and watching our budget because the influx of cash is over. We'll get more at the end of the year, but we're not gonna get a whole lot in between. So, please limit your spending wherever possible. And then I have the acceleration. This month, it's $399.34.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Reis.
Yes.
Strategic management update?
I'm planning to give that update at the next council meeting.
Music in the park is tomorrow from 7:00, 30 PM. New Year's Eve, the next New Year's Eve committee meeting is September 24th at 6:00 PM. SRI Moving on the River is August 22nd at 6:00 PM. It's gonna be train, you're driving, there's probably crafts and vendors there. And of course, the SRI Sunbury River Festival is this weekend, August 16th and 17th. The next Heart and Heritage Committee meeting is October 23rd at 6:00 PM. Is there any audience comment at this time?
There's an 8:15 balance got down.
Awesome.
Final standing. My comment.
Our gentleman.
Hello, everybody. As you know, my name is Demos Canaruyes. I'm sorry for the discretion, the frank I put in, but I don't have another way to do, to respond to my problems, you know? And the thing is, the newspaper created problems. So, it's no fire, no, no sparks in the windows. You know, it's looked like I talked with a flag and said to me, so many years nobody listened to you, do something, put me in correct to hear your voice. So, I put him in correct and after I hear the voice, Mr. Francis creates so many problems, you know? And a few people say, you know, this offended for the flag and some wrong for the councilmen and commissioners, but the commissioners and those people, they wrong for the councilmen. They're not offended to see the people die on the sidewalk in the house with the nails and the head. Tried to attack me personally, but the thing is, I did that because I love this country and I tried the best for 10 years here to make it community colors. Last Tuesday, I was over there and commissioned me, Mr. Shark? No, the Bob Garrick was over there and I say, you know, hallelujah, we got the colors bringing Northampton. And I told him, Mr. Bob, you remember me? I'm the guy who, I give you the letter from the bayou he gave me in February 18th last year and I give it to him and I give him my telephone to call me, he never, he never called me. And that's good thing, the colors in Northampton, but I ask you everybody, the colors in Northampton, they're gonna help the Sandbury or make it worse, the Sandbury here? We tried for 10 years, we make a visit in the community college in Botlet with Mr. John Shipman over there, I don't know if he's remembered, so as of far, nothing. And I still, and my dream and pay my taxes correctly and I asked Mr. Garrick why, you know, he called me even to say to me, no, we don't make it over here and a half now. The college is going to Watsontown, like, gonna help the Sandbury or make all the houses in here and all the progress for closing? Anybody gonna tell me anything?
I'm trying to ask if the college going to Watsontown is going to help the city.
Yeah, the thing I want to know, that's a city building, state building or private building? They pay, they pay rent and how much rent are they gonna pay?
Watsontown?
Yeah, the college.
I get that we, I think colleges are very.
Oh, then Mr. Garrick would say, oh, we're making the college over there, blah, 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 but he brought the rent to say, we pay the rent or that's private property or city property or state property? No, they not given no information?
School district.
I think the school district comes a building, it's going to a spread school building. Because, and maybe not there, he didn't say anything, he left. And even the rent, he didn't say anything.
I think they looked at a property here and they decided to choose elsewhere.
Excuse me?
I think they looked at a property in Sunbury and decided to choose Watsontown based off the geographies of the school.
Well, like I'm saying, nobody, my building, that's only for me, I dedicate myself to the Sandbury. I love this town and I wanna, I bought the house here, I wanna live in here, die in here. So, and I wanna see, stop before closures and everything that happened against the homeowners and the people of the Sandbury. So, I want to ask Mr. Francis, too many times I've tried to tell my story, what happened in my building with roof dye, with water, flood in the basement, with the water, with water made in the outside for the, maybe half a block, one block away from my building. He never lied, why? He supposed to serve the public. He working for the private people or the, I know the people. He worked for the public, for the good for the public, but for few people to, to, to help.
I'm on council.
So, so many times I've told him to write my story and you write different things.
This, you have to make your comments towards the council with this. This isn't for the public to make comments towards the public, okay?
The thing is, he say I make a harbor to the Republican Party. He forgot a few years ago, when the Kim Best, the commissioner, coming to, Mr. and Ms. Mingle called me and say, I got somebody interested for your building for the community colors. And Kim Best coming and asked my wife to put the signs over there. My wife say yes. She don't ask me, but I don't want to say anything about my wife. She put the signs and after, you know, she quit from the, from the school and go and and Wolf and Bear Architects and bring me bill of three, four million dollars to fix, I gonna fix the building to make it. There's something, something wrong, you know? You think I supposed to fix the building and make it, and after if I spend four, three, four million dollars and the building stay empty, I'm gonna hand it myself, yes? That's good advice or bad advice? Even when I went over there on the Botlet Community College a few years ago, Mr. John Shipman was over there, Ms. Mingle give that advice too, you know?
So, you only want a community college in that building? It's the only thing you ever accept in there?
Excuse me?
You can only accept a community college in that building?
Well, anything that's a community, not me, okay? And I'm not really to make money. I wanna see everybody make a money, not only me. Because, you know why? Because when I come to this country, ten pennies, four dollars in my pocket, okay? And I was illegal, but I don't go to break somebody else's door and sit down at his table to eat the food. I'm working and I've worked all my life, but I find good woman, I'm married here for 50 years and create family, I educate my kids, as you know, Mr. Mayor, my son. So, and I'm proud for that and I wanna see people born here and stay in the welfare line, you know, wait for the welfare and they don't want to work and blame the President, Trump for that. Anything happen, we blame the President. The video games. You think they not destroy the kids with the video games, the penalty with the shootings over there, bum, 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 bum? That's a bad example for the kids? Yes, Mr. Mayor, no. The video games. And we don't have to blame the President or anything going wrong to blame the President.
This one's local.
Yeah.
For a moment.
What can we help you with locally here in Sunbury?
Excuse me?
What can we help you with locally here in Sunbury, sir?
I don't know, so far, nothing. I don't know why, because the slogan, the slogan is not buying the Sandbury, just waiting for closure in Sandbury. Who's the new blood coming to help, to help the community, to help the, for the Market Street? Who's the new blood coming to help, to help the community, to help the, for the, the market street? If, if somebody rent the store, you're not gonna make any money, you're gonna be here for one, two months and not pay the rent, go away. If no people coming here to invest, like a community college, five, six people, five, six hundred people staying, coming out for the, for that building, it's gonna be like honeycomb. That's better for everybody. Yes? I don't know. What do you think?
Well, the city is gonna, is working hard and we're working with a partnership with Sunbury revitalization and there's many things, it's very common, many things have to happen all at once.
Everybody says you?
So we are, we will continue to work toward that.
So far, I don't think they're working for the Sandbury. S R I. That's why I never, I never go, I don't know now, because I quit to go over there. I was before when Christine McFalen was, she tried to help me, she disappeared. Charlie Rose working on the uh Bob Garrick taking his place. So, everything would try to help me and make the blueprints for the building, they disappearing. I don't know why, because if you look the record, the newspaper, for me, that's prejudiced. And I think the FBI go to investigate them. Because whatever I say, last, last week, uh January, January twenty ninth, they put me like homeless. That's nice. And you not say that's my building, no? This place sparks, sparks and creeps in several, several fronts. But that time when I saw the snow and break the ice, it look like I was a homeless and break the ice and working outside.
I don't think there's any answer we can give you this evening that's gonna satisfy you.
Excuse me?
I don't think there's any answer we can give you this evening that will satisfy you.
I understand that.
So, um, and you know, we don't, we don't control the press, it's the freedom of the press, they write their stories and, and um, this isn't the forum to try to correct the press or anything like this, so and I don't think there's anything right this evening that the council's gonna be able to do for you, except that they heard you and we understand your frustrations and we, and we have heard you.
I appreciate you help and what you say, but if the news working against the truth doesn't, like the President say, fake news.
Thank you for your comments.
I don't know. And I feel sorry for him because I'm tried too many times to tell my story, but he don't, because he don't want to embarrass few women act to destroy me. And if he, as good man and man like, like a reporter, is gonna report those women to say the truth.
Is there any other audience comment? Mister Shipman?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Shipman. I just wanna make a couple comments about a community college. This, many of us have passion for a community college, let me just explain to the audience and to you ladies and gentlemen, the benefits of a local community college. A local community college, number one, would give our employers job-ready, trained employees. Talk to your employers in the city and the county. One of the biggest complaints they have is, we can't hire any qualified people. Number two, it would keep our local youth in the area because the tuition at a local community college is three thousand five hundred dollars a year. A year. Which can be paid for one hundred percent with Pellgrin's. No loans, no big bills. Bloomsburg, fourteen thousand dollars a year, fifteen thousand dollars a year tuition. Lackawanna College, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars a year tuition. Not cheap. Local community college, thirty-five hundred. Our young people can go there part-time. They could work, they could walk to school. How many of our young people are gonna go to Watsontown? Maybe a couple. But if we want economic development in this city, there is no better tool than a local community college. In tax revenue, it has been state shown consistently, that for every tax dollar spent on local community college support, four dollars in tax revenue come back to the municipality, the city, or the county who sponsors it. In addition to that, economic development starts at about ten dollars for every dollar spent. And if you look at the community colleges that have been around for twenty, thirty years, it's now sixty, seventy, eighty dollars for every dollar of tax money spent by the local communities. If you wanna talk about redevelopment, if you wanna talk about revitalization, you wanna talk about getting the city of Sunbury going, there's no better tool than a local community college. Now, let me just give you a little, thank you. Let me just give you a little, a little story. Let's say we decide that, because this is what we're getting in Watsontown. Let's say we, we determine that there's a need for low-cost bus transportation in the city of Sunbury. So I come to you and say, I, but I, I'd like to make a proposal to you ladies and gentlemen. You buy the bus, you pay for the bus, you pay all the expenses for the bus. I'll hire the bus driver. You can send, you can let your kids ride on the bus for half price. I keep all the profits. Would you give me, would you give me that kind of a deal? That's the deal that Northumberland County just gave Watsontown. How does that help Sunbury? Not a bit, thank you.
Any other audience comments?
I would say I would think we're the ones that you have to convince in the community college. I mean, the county has to put up money for the community college to come into Sunbury. Um, the, the surrounding county may be counties that have to put up money for community college to come into Sunbury. I don't think anybody on council would say no to a community college coming into Sunbury.
And, and, and the coalition of municipalities can do that. Yeah. Doesn't have to just be Sunbury.
So I'm talking to convince the county, convince the surrounding county, that's, I mean, we hear that, I hear that all the time about the community college. But that's, it doesn't, it can't just come here. It doesn't end here.
I'm actually gonna follow up on that issue, if you don't mind, sorry. And that is that, um, I know that the Sesame Valley Community Education Project isn't asking the, the city to put in money for that because the most stable model is to have the county support. But honestly, having the support of the city council does make a big difference. So, um, if there's any way the city council, um, could, um, quit for something, saying, stating that the city of Sunbury is in favor of it or even individually, if you can approach your, um, your county commissioners, we would really appreciate that kind of support. Um, in the past, actually, there was, um, action against the concept of a community college, so I think we're saying, stating that the city of Sunbury supports a community college would be huge. And I think the goal right now is for that community college to, um, support Snyder, Northumberland, Union, Montour Counties. So, um, it's just that if you look at those geographically, Sunbury does happen to be right geographically, percent of that. We're also in a high population density area, we have housing, we have all the community services, all right here. The biggest problem with the Watsontown location is it's still remote and it still doesn't have the opportunity to serve people that are really in need. How do you reach people that don't have the ability to have around transportation in a place where, that there's already housing available, that's how you do it. So, um, really, I hope you do consider doing something, a letter, or even just verbally individually speaking to a county manager, so that would be huge. The other estimate, just, you know, I am on that, the Sesame Valley Community Education Project. That the total investment needed by the counties is one mil, which is fifty cents per household, um, per week. So, less than a couple of dollars a week would support the college. Also, you find that investment doesn't increase over time. That is one mil, that's it, the community college, that is all that needs for the seed money for it to grow on its own and develop, um, open up and continue to develop. Community colleges aren't going back and asking for more money, they just need that stability, that base of support in order to leverage money from the state and also from the students to make all that happen.
But that one mil's not just Northumberland County?
Correct, that's, that's Snyder Union, so it's not just convincing us, not convincing our county. Right. Right, but I wouldn't expect that our, our city council convince other counties, I mean, great. But I'd just be thrilled if somehow we can at least put a favorable for.
Did you say a million or a mil?
One mil.
And what is that in Northumberland County?
John, do you recall what that is in Northumberland County, one mil?
It would take one mil, one mil in Northumberland County raised about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the other three, uh, total would raise about another, uh, about another five hundred thousand dollars, so one mil in the four counties would raise about one point two million dollars, which is what we, we would need for the local, uh, to get that thing off the ground.
And all that investment he's talking about in the community is if we were to have our own community college in this region instead of having, like, Blue's aren't just putting a site location where it's most advantageous for them. So they can reach, like the Williamsport Market was their hope by going to Watsontown, so I think that that's really unfair to the students in our area to, um, think of that as the final solution. I'm really hoping that we can do something now. So, I'm, he's supportive of economic development, um, that's probably is I'm on shotgun community college. I'd also want to reopen the discussions on rental properties. And I only do that because that's something I know, it's something I interact with a lot, um, as, as everybody knows. We, we still have a couple policies in place which are slowing development. That nine hundred square footage rule, although it, it's, it's an arbitrary number, um, the I B C, the I B C has now eliminated that as, International Building Code has eliminated that as a guideline, while we still maintain this nine hundred square foot only in our downtown business district. An area which really should be for, um, higher density living and not, it, you know, to have more people here supporting our businesses, creating good economy, uh, uh, no. Good economy, you need to have people and also businesses. People there that live there can support those businesses and help them to survive. For instance, um, I just purchased the Dando Glass and Locke Building. There were formerly three, um, apartments upstairs in that building. None of them meet the guidelines because they are all under nine hundred square feet, um, in varying amounts, but that makes them all ineligible to receive a rental permit, at least individually. I, I just would like you to reconsider opening that up, um, because what we're doing is we're, we had, we created an arbitrary way that we're slowing our economy and we're preventing people from living in our community and helping our economy grow. So, I mean, that, it, um, reducing that, the fee that I didn't know, I talked about before, and also that square footage, I think, really would help open up, um, investors. I've talked with, I just, in the past some months, I heard about a story. We're also reducing property values. There was a double up on the hill, um, that a guy started to do, that bought, started to invest, completely remodeling it, and then found out he wasn't gonna be able to get rental permits and ended up selling it for twenty grand. That would be a great investment property for a young couple to buy one, buy, live in one side and have the other side, but they couldn't do that because there was no opportunity to get rental permits. So I just wanted to put that out there, please consider reopening that conversation.
Two questions. What size would you recommend?
I would recommend somewhere else in Sunbury city guidelines, there is somewhere where it has like three or four hundred, somewhere in there, there's another number somewhere else in our.
Three hundred square feet per.
Three, four something per unit. But.
That's relatively small.
It is, however, the I B C, the I B C actually just eliminated square footage as a guideline. So I mean, I think, I, I do think that there should be something, but also too, I mean, if you look at the units, I have a bit of ones like six hundred and thirty square feet and, and it, you know, it's a full living room bedroom balcony.
But when you bought it, you knew the.
I do, yes, absolutely. But I'm also willing to have this discussion and be willing to take the risk. I would say most investors aren't maybe going to take that risk. So that's, I don't wanna see our economy slow artificially because of our, our own policies. So, that's, that's my question and I hope you think about that. Thank you.
Any other audience comments?
Um, I'm not gonna speak on the college, community college item, luckily. Kristen Hogan. I live here in Sunbury. I also support a community college. I am a little bit of angst about the rental thing because I don't think Sunbury needs to be huge rental market compared to owner occupied when there's other towns around that could maybe provide that business opportunity for folks. But I'm actually here to say, you know, I'd like to talk to the city council about the intersection of South Worth and Spruce. At the spot where the cemetery is located, when we have our Memorial Day parade, um, when the speakers are at that monument for the lost veterans. That intersection is quite problematic and I have the privilege of working from home. And I sit, because I'm a nosy nurse, I sit in the very front window of my house and watch the world go by while I work all day. And there have been multiple occasions where I have, including today, and I called and then I'm like, I will be there tonight. I actually thought I was gonna have to hang up on the person I was supposed to be working for and go out to an accident sitting in front of my house. And I've seen this multiple times, I've been sitting in that window for three years. And the intersection is hugely problematic, we're not gonna change that. The, when you come down from Front Street with the river at your back, when you get to Fourth, it is two parking lanes and two tra- two traffic lanes. It oddly narrows to, when you cross Fourth, to one traffic lane, one parking lane. And then Spruce can, Spruce is, that's Spruce. Fourth is a little bit tight when you head towards the transfer station. Today I watched a Watsontown landfill truck come down, need to take the wide turn to go to the transfer station, don't have any objection to that. Along Fourth comes a lady and I can see out my window in the living room, I can see out the window where I'm working. She is talking on her phone, looking at my house, because I'm on the east side of the intersection. And she goes to turn right, didn't even look. Didn't even stop, didn't even see. I think that's me. Didn't even see that there was a eighteen wheeler there, because she's on her phone, fuck it, and she's got it. So, and I've called a couple of times and asked the city, would you guys be willing to do something to make that stop sign more visible? Or ideally, in my humble opinion, is to paint the word stop on the street. And I've gotten enough, that's not a problem. And we have had issues with kids in our neighborhood with close calls. Fourth and Spruce.
I'm sorry, when was the last time you called about it?
I'm not sure, when, I don't write it down because I get so irritated.
So what I was saying?
I, I don't know that, I, I don't know who I spoke to.
I don't know who you called.
Yeah, well, I've called. I've called.
So, and your, your issue, is it coming from the municipal authority that stop sign there?
When you're coming, when you're driving down Fourth Street, headed for municipal authority, the river's here.
Yes.
The football field is here.
It says, okay, so it says stop sign there and it pops out of nowhere again?
Yes. And somebody's gonna paint stop on the, on the ground there, it's either gonna be you guys or me. But it really needs to happen. I'm a nurse, I do not wanna have to run and minister or care to somebody because they've just been smeared.
I, I, I've had an issue that's that time too.
And we're a neighborhood absolutely filled with children. So especially in warmer weather, we got kids on bikes, we've got the track team running, boys and girls are all running up and then a while later, they all run back. And then we've got kids who are totally out too much on their bikes, wearing no helmets, that's another discussion. So I really feel strongly that something needs to happen with that. And I'll return it, nothing does.
On dump day.
My husband.
On dump day, on Saturday, I call it dump day. It's especially bad because you have a lot of out of town people and they come line up the street.
It's really how the intersection is configured, but we can't change that, otherwise you're gonna take down my house, which is not an option. But we just did something on the ground. Yes, thank you. Do you have anything else to say, Mister Hogan? Charles Hogan? For the record, thank you.
Any other comments, sir?
I was waiting for somebody to respond. Question about the, the, uh, community college thing, speaking of that thing, one point two million with the one mil, is that a one-time thing, you get things up and running, or is that an annual?
It's an annual, I'm pretty sure. John Shipman?
One mil would be an annual, uh, it would be a, a, a tax. Uh, one mil for the average household in, in Northumberland County is fifty cents a week. So it's, uh, it's about two bucks a month, so it's, it, but it would be an ongoing one mil, uh, real estate tax, uh, across the county.
Although I just said it brings back five dollars in tax revenue, per dollar spent.
The reason I came tonight is, A, thank you fellows, whatever you did last year satisfied that noise problem that the former church owns. It stuck.
I, I think, police department needs someone, they, they stepped up their, their coverage here too, but, uh, again, I think we found the source. And, uh, but.
The thing tonight was, I wanted to make you guys aware of the problem with the property at Seventh and Packer, used to be the Community Gardens, is now. at Seventh and Packer, used to be the community gardens, it is now a scrapyard, full-blown and repair yard. Lot of noise, it's there seven days a week, holidays.
Pick your time of the day, it doesn't-
You can't, you can't predict your time of day. You've been there up till seven o'clock at night, a lot of engine running, a lot of grinding, a lot of banging. When that went in originally, I spoke to Brianna Kula, and she said, we got this, we gotta keep an eye on it. I just spoke to Dr. Kula about that today, and he said they're aware of the problem, and are looking at it. Just wanted to be sure you folks were-
I think what Jody would have been does, Paul, they, I think they applied for a verance that time, didn't they?
Mike, is that R1, or is that neighborhood business there?
I believe it's R1.
R1. And they went for a verance to put that in there, didn't they?
They were not, I don't think they were approved to have a garage operation there. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
What I was told by, by Brianna at the time was that, and, told by code, they didn't go through code, it just went through redevelopment. And they were approved to have a garage, a drive-your-car-in and park-it garage, nothing sitting outside. That's just what I was told, I've never seen it.
I'll check.
I mean, a full verance, a secret verance, but the guidelines was, I'm, I'm sure he's breaking the guidelines.
How you doing business there?
I don't know that he's doing business there, but he's doing work there.
You see, isn't he? He has tons of junk cars and junk-
I would have booked, he booked to take the car by there when you get out of here tonight.
For what it's worth, the complaints that the redevelopment authority has received, it's been about code activities, and there are deep restrictions in there too, about the use of the property, so it's one avenue. If, and Brianna and attorney Lou are gonna have a chat about this too, to find out, because I think there's a multi-faceted approach, whether it's from the city side or the R1 side, so.
Right, and I have gotten complaints multiple times, and I've always engaged with crew to follow up on them.
Mike, I think that we should both at the same time address the issue from both sides. Jody?
Okay.
Any other comments tonight?
Hi, my name is Sharon Mau, I'm new back to the city, I formerly lived here and raised my children, and divorced and moved away, and approximately a year ago, I moved back. Upon doing so, I have ongoing health issues. So I came to the city to ask for a handicap parking sign to be placed outside. And on the thing, it said where do you want it placed, I measured it, showed a picture of my porch to the closest point to get out of my home, without carrying all the way through my lawn and to my off-street parking. So they approved it, and I came home, my sister had been in one of them, I talked to the guys before I left, she just reached my passport, I'm going through a lot of stress, but I still need to do this. It has to be set, it has to be done, something has to be changed. I have not been able to, other than one time, pull into my space. My neighbors consistently, one eight-three-one, I didn't know they had a handicap placard, I was not aware of this. All of a sudden, I come home from the hospital, there's a car in it, and I went, oh, it's my neighbors, I didn't know. That's okay, everybody has a right to park in a handicap space, so I understand. Repeatedly, I have photographs. I have only one time had an opportunity to win, upon doing so, got cursed and harassed upon parking my car in that space. I feel that my rights have been violated as a handicapped individual and only person, I've been discriminated against, I, I feel awful about this whole thing. I feel there should be a way to resolve this. They pull one car out, they have multiple cars, I have photographs, they place another one back in it when they take one out. So therefore, I can never park in a space that I asked for with my medical records. I think it's very unfair. Is there a way we can maybe assign a license number to a handicap phone?
That's all in your department?
Yeah, ordinance doesn't, doesn't say that, it says that, you know, any handicap spaces for anybody to use with any, like, emergency. And then, but the only thing I should probably maybe-
Ignorance and harassment of doing this to me.
Right, or the handicap placards are they assigned to the person that can be transferred to car to car?
So you could put them in any car you want, and then move them?
I, I don't have a placard, I have a plate. I've had this for like twenty, thirty years.
Eighty-three, thirty-three, stuff, and, and buy-
And the fear that I would have is we could put another spot in, but then they could just use both.
Pull another car in, and then we were going to, I talked to Jody about moving it to the second space.
Yeah.
Well, the second space arose a problem for me, if you would come up to the property and look, if I parked in the second space, I would when I first moved in, and I get out in the evening, and a sawjalk is raised, there's tree trunks, and I'm down. I do not want to have my space in the second-
We did some research on this a few years ago, okay?
I do not want it in the second place.
Not the this particular one, but the handicap, the only way you can go to an assigned space is you call, make it a reserved parking spot, and basically then you have to charge a fee for that.
Which is what it does.
Just like you would for your hands parking.
But our ordinance doesn't currently have that in there. Our ordinance doesn't say that anywhere, that we can do that currently. You have to add that in.
But you would have that, if we do the reserved parking spot, would almost have to be the same thing as a annual parking permit fee?
So then anybody could do it for any space in front of their house at that point, doesn't have to serve any handicap space.
It would be reserved, correct?
I think so.
It's a handicap, they're smoking, they charge a hundred dollars a year for it out there, and your placard matches, it's on the sign, they're smoking. And you don't have for years, fifteen years.
We have, we have been, in our system, it shows who signed up for the handicap, but they're not, they're not assigned.
Again, they're not assigned.
Yeah, so there's no way right now that we can enforce it the way it is. I can say that.
I understand, but can things be changed in the future? Can ignorance prevails when someone does this to someone?
You see, Shmoken does it, right?
Yeah, they've been doing it for years.
Let me, at least between now and the next meeting, let me review Shmoken's ordinance, exactly what their wording is, and see if we can look at it for us. I can't promise anything right now, but I can at least look at it.
I don't have a chance to park in that space, multiple vehicles pulling in and out consistently, cursing at me, trying to get in my space, it's not-
The harassment issue, I think, sounds more maybe police than versus.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're in a house, and they say anything, you see the call-in honor, remember, and we'll come up, we'll come up and address the issue. A lot of times, you try to get people the benefit of the doubt, to stop doing what they're doing, and they continue to do it, and we can cite it.
I'm ready to place cameras up on the-
And I advise you to do that. Unfortunately, you can't, unfortunately, you can't help it, some people are just jurors.
And, and again, I don't know what their handicap is, but they surely, obviously don't visibly need it, with a strong helmet.
If you have news, you just call, just call the number one, sir, and they'll describe what was the problem, okay?
I'm still that I've been discriminated against, I can't park where I need to park, I can't enter my entrance where I asked to enter, and it's not fair.
Well, I'll look at the other reisvales ordinancees, see what we can do, this is, again, I can't promise it, but I'm gonna look at it, and I'll come back to the meeting with kinda where we're thinking on that.
I wished we could get something that at least secured our, our sign, that our license plate number matched it, or-
Anything to Shmoken, I think, so anyone does it, but then they involve the fee, and then that would be your part.
Oh, that's, I'm okay with that, at least I know that I can park in that space and I can get in and out of my residence wherever it may be safe.
Yeah, well, I'll even look at it, come back next meeting or something.
I appreciate that, thank you all.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Is there any other audience comments tonight?
Just a very quick comment with Rivercrest this weekend, just ask the residents and people to be patient with the traffic patterns, please, and thank you.
Any other audience comments tonight? All right, thank you all for coming out today, me as a drinker.